All tonight's meeting to order. Find my notes. First off tonight, we have Corby Johnson with the United Methodist Church with us this evening. Corby, thank you for being here. We all stand and pray invocation.
Thank you. Thank you Mayor McFarland for leading our city and for inviting the emergency assistance ministry to the council meetings to pray. I'm the pastor at the United Methodist Church here in town on Treacle in Casa Grande. And our goal for our church and in cooperation with the Eames is to provide love and counsel to people who are in need and to help assist them in finding helps that they require with food and clothing and housing and services right here in our community. This is an ongoing opportunity for us all and for not just the churches but for our government and social service organizations, neighborhood organizations and community protection services to work together this time of year, especially when the numbers dramatically increase. Let us pray. Lord, people find themselves in circumstances that they never thought they would. There's a helplessness that envelops them when they lose a job, when they lose their housing, there's a desperation and a separation from society. Comes with drug addiction and mental health issues and hygiene problems that there's nowhere to shower, there's nowhere to get clean, there's no clean clothing and the food is iffy or nonexistent. Lord, this doesn't just happen to the indigent, it happens to low-income and elderly people looking for housing that's not available. Lord, allow us to look at our community and these people with new eyes, developing positive and loving relationships. We are God's hands and ears and voice here on earth. Lead and guide us to be positive influences in Casa Grande that all people, no matter what their financial situation, would feel safe at the rising of the sun and safe at the rising of the stars at night. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Corby. Thank you Matt. Okay, let the roll call show everyone is present. Gloria?
Mayor McFarland, regarding the minutes, I would like to move that we approve the council regular meeting minutes from January 16th and that we accept for the record the Historic Preservation Commission meeting minutes from November 27th. Healthcare Benefits Board of Trustees, December 15th. Casa Grande Youth Commission, December 2nd, and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board from January 18th as they're presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes?
We have no changes.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move reports, which is item N, to come before item M, so it'll follow item L on your agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting agenda is approved. We have a special presentation tonight, so I think APS is here. You guys, oh, there you are. I see you now. Want to do it down here?
Sure.
Text down there. Okay.
I want to know if I can catch it.
I have a couple of words. I'm Steve Chassie and Brian Garnier from APS. Richard Rosales is in the audience. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much. And a couple of words, APS is committing to helping Arizona secure a bright future. We want to give our customers more options and control of how they use their electricity. When the city contacted us to express their interest in converting approximately 3,900 streetlights to energy-efficient LEDs, we worked hand-in-hand with them to do just that. Casa Grande's conversion to LED lights will put a significant amount of money back into the community by saving on energy and maintenance costs. As a result of this project, I would like to present the city with a rebate check from APS for $234,505.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can add just a few items. We certainly appreciate the partnership with APS and I also want to take the opportunity to thank Amoresco and the Linias here tonight. We've partnered with Amoresco on several projects, energy-saving projects, that range from just our energy-saving program to our streetlights as well as our solar projects that we've taken on. And obviously, the majority of those have been managed by Stephen Turner in our office. And so, we're excited about the return on investment that we're recognizing from all three of those projects.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again.
I want to make a comment too, and with Amoresco and that, is sometimes, so when we go to these conferences and these conventions and that sort of thing, one of the most fun for me is going down in the exhibition hall and seeing what's out there. And so, I'll get excited about the playground equipment and that. And I remember seeing the first, I've been on council 10 years, the first proposals for this kind of lighting and all of this. And it was just kind of getting in its infancy and talking and bringing materials back. And just the idea that now, you know, we're ahead of Phoenix as far as our installation and our progress on this. So, that's where we get a lot of this, is when we go to these halls and bring this information back. And you as industry folks, I hope you continue to go to these conferences, because that's where we find out about you and the benefits. So, I thank you for that.
Just one thing you should know. We actually thought you were only gonna get about $18,000 plus in that check, so it came out better than we thought.
Oh, there you go.
We appreciate the error in your calculation. Thank you. And again, thank you APS, you guys. Thank you.
Yes, everybody.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay. Consent agenda item number G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted in one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to pull off or change?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. If anyone from the public would like to approach the podium, please do so now. Okay. Do we have anything in the box, Larry?
I thought you didn't share, but it was just the talking.
Okay, okay. All right, well, seeing no one coming forward, then I will close the public comments. And we'll move to item I, Word of Contracts, I-1.
That's me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
That's your cue, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The ordinance in question tonight, the Smith family approached the city several months ago about the possibility of, or the potential about selling approximately 144 acres next to the Ed Hooper Rodeo Grounds. And with the location next to those facilities, those recreation facilities, the city saw some opportunities to maybe expand some of the potential in that area. And ultimately, the staff and the Smith family agreed upon a purchase price of $12,500 per acre. This land purchase is not a budgeted item and as such, staff request the use of budget authority provided for in the city's budgeted contingency. The city will utilize general fund balance to pay $1,558,193 towards the acquisition of the property. The remaining balance, $248,806.97, will be paid using development impact fees. So with that, staff recommends that mayor and the city council authorize a purchase of 144.56 acres from the Gladys A. Smith Trust in an amount not to exceed $1,807,000. And with that, I open the floor for any questions. And I also want to recognize a member of the Smith family is here tonight as well.
I would just comment, as you look at this, this land is so opportunistic to expand our parks, another 144 acres. And on the west side, it goes, from that point on, it goes to state land. And if those little hills that are beyond that actually have an ancient Indian village that is there, there's still a lot of pottery and stuff on the ground and whatever, and that might be incorporated at some future date. But this gives us a lot of space to, I mean, it's hard to find places to do things, as we know, when you look in town for where you have some acreage. It's disappeared so vastly that this is a real opportunity. And I think it was priced a lot higher when the building boom was going on, but I think it's very reasonable and I think it would really behoove the city of Casa Grande to obtain the property.
Okay. Ralph?
Can you address a little bit about what kind of plan or timeline we're looking at in terms of the acreage? I know, because I think some of us gotten calls in regards to expenditure of funds and so forth, and I think, kind of putting in perspective what the timeline is and what it would look like, in five years or 10 years or...
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Varela, at this time, there hasn't been anything put in, as far as a plan put in place, this opportunity was presented to us. And so, we're moving forward with that and looking to incorporate it possibly in some plans down the road with the study, with our development impact fee study. And another thing, we're trying to look at different options for us, for the city to pursue. I don't know if, Larry, if there's anything else that you'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe Mr. Turner somewhat summarizes that. We do not have any immediate plans to develop this site. Obviously, as Mr. Powell has pointed out, we believe that it's an opportunity from the city's perspective, number one, because of the proximity to the park. It allows us to maximize and expand an existing park, provide additional amenities to the residents in the future. One of the other key drivers behind this particular recommendation this evening for the acquisition of this property is that we have been successful in negotiation of the particular site to actually be purchased at an amount that's lower than the appraised value. And so, we are, again, we are looking at this from a timing perspective, but there's still a fair amount of what I would consider to be planning that needs to take place regarding what ultimately will be the development timeline for the 144 acres.
Larry, I do have a question. So, if down the road, let's say this acreage becomes a lot more valuable and we haven't done anything with it, we could sell it, correct?
We, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we certainly could evaluate the potential sell if, in fact, we do not have imminent development types of expectations. Again, we just, from a community park standpoint, it allows us to really build on what I would consider to be a more, a park that has many more amenities at one specific location rather than spreading those out to different locations throughout the community.
Okay. Lisa?
And you know, it's kind of piggyback on this discussion. Of course, you know, I understand the proximity, I understand expanding, you know, services, but of course, you know, we have people that are concerned with us spending up 1.8 million when we might not have 1.8 million, where there's other services that need to be done. So, and, you know, roads, you know, whatever, there's so much to be done. So, you know, just kind of, I understand that the price is, you know, good price, and I know we've had those discussions, they were asking for a lot more at that time. But, you know, I just want to make sure we, I understand, you know, how critical it might be at this point, or, I mean, of course, we don't know where real estate's gonna go in another year or two and if they're gonna sell to someone else. But, you know, I just, I just want the community to understand, you know, really, the importance if it's this time and why this time and why, why are they asking for less at this point? Is it that, no, they're not getting offers, you know, on that property, they know the city will pay, so they're gonna ask them, you know, right now? So, I really want to understand why it's so important at this time, besides being a good price, you know, but we can go and get a car for a good price right now. So, you know, just trying to understand that a little clearer.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Fitzgibbons and council members, a couple of things that I'd like to add or respond to in the question. First and foremost, this particular property has been made somewhat available to us out of the graciousness of the Smith family. And they, and Eldon Smith's here today, he might be able to speak on this if he'd like him to, they specifically were hopeful that the city would be interested in this parcel of land. And in fact, had a full cash, had a full price offer on this particular parcel of land, the individual that was looking at that actually wanted to turn it in, wanted to convert it into a mobile home park. And, but came back to the city, we talked about what our limitations were from a financial perspective and ultimately negotiated the price that's been presented to the mayor and council tonight. Let me speak just briefly about the allocation of funds for this particular project and comparing it to other projects. The first thing I want the council to recognize is really two things. Number one is we're using some level of development impact fees on this, which have to specifically be utilized for parks. That money cannot be utilized to pave a road or to do other types of capital improvements. The second component of it is that, yes, we are actually covering the delta between the development impact fees and the price that we've offered here this evening with general funds, but our anticipation as the city staff is to do two things. Number one, we do have a land holding on the north part of the town that we had specifically identified for parks, and we are in some level of negotiations at this point with a broker about the potential sell of some of those. When that money is actually recovered or that land is sold, we actually anticipate reimbursing the general fund for that. So again, it's a specific use. Lastly, we are negotiating some other land deals. I know the council's familiar with our holdings in the Dreamport Village component. That deal, again, that money, those revenue streams that would be coming to the city actually have to be used for some type of a park development. They cannot be used for other types of services and/or any type of what I would consider to be a capital acquisition.
I have several and I'll go through them very, very... First of all, I want to really appreciate the Smith family for, you know, coming down on the price. This has been a conversation for us for quite a while, but I just feel like times are different right now. I've got concerns over revenue stream to the city with the closing of Sam and other retail that we're really looking at a whole different, and all cities are looking at different revenue streams and coming up short on that. I wish it was closed up right next to Ed Hooper Park. I don't think I would have as much concern on it. Mine is, well, it is. Okay. And I, yeah, I apologize for that. But, is that, and then as far as a trailer park and that sort of thing on the entry is, so my question would be, is it feasible? Would we see this and would we see that, say, even in the next 10 years, that this could become a regional park somewhat of what Gilbert has just now rolled out on that? Because that would make a difference to me. Last thing is a concern I do have is on paragraph three. Is there an environmental being done on this? Is there? I don't see a specific in this contract.
So again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Cortson, a couple of questions in that particular question. Number one is that this particular parcel is adjacent to our existing holdings of Ed Hooper Park, Paul Mason Complex. So, they are contiguous, they are adjacent. One point that I do want to point out to the council is that it is out of the city limits at this point, so, but there are a variety of options for us to annex it into the city limits if the council decides to pursue that. Does this particular parcel allow us more flexibility to, in fact, build a more regional park much like they do at the city of Gilbert, the town of Gilbert? The answer is absolutely. In fact, that is one of the primary reasons why we've looked at this, is that the mayor and council, over the several years, have considered several master plan opportunities of the Ed Hooper Park and Paul Mason Sportsplex. And if you recall, what we ultimately end up having issues with is the fact that we've got too many amenities that we're trying to fit into the location. As Mr. Powell once referred to it, is we're trying to put 10 pounds of groceries in a five-pound sack. And so, ultimately, what this does is gives us the opportunity to expand again those amenities and really go through what I would consider to be the planning of a more, a more regional park that, and we can do a variety of things, expand, you know, baseball, softball out there, softball fields. We can add a variety of recreation amenities. And so, again, it's a bit premature this evening for us because we've not done any planning on it, but it certainly opens the door for us to build a much more community-wide park.
It's feasible?
Yes.
And what about the environmental? That does bother me.
Thank you. There was an environmental conducted on the parcel with no findings.
Okay, because it's just, as is and as shown, it just makes me nervous.
We actually added, we had a consultant that came in and did a phase-one environmental and nothing significant. And in fact, we did not move to a phase-two because of the findings in the phase-one.
And so Brett, you're comfortable with this?
And if council does approve this, there is a due diligence period. You know, the phase-one environmental is, as Larry had said, is already something that we wanted to take a look at before we even got to this phase. But the remainder of the due diligence as a standard real estate, we've got a 90-day due diligence period to go through all the documents. We need to get title documents, we need to do all of those that you normally and customarily would do in a real estate purchasing transaction, and we will be doing those.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And that would be at our expense, though, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to add that I checked it out personally Sunday. It's really just desert. It's never really had anything done to it. There's an old pump out there that's far from working and, but it's an empty canvas to paint on. And we hear so much from the community saying, "We need to have more activities, we need to do more things to draw people here." This is a big opportunity to do that, and I think, as I say, I would be excited and I think we all will as it develops.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. You know, it is concerning the amount of money, but I mean, I don't, Larry, what's the effect on our, I mean, I know it's 1.5 million on our general fund, but put that in perspective for everyone, if you would. I mean, kind of the percentage of our general fund, that is.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Herman, that's approximately 10% of our general fund. Again, we simply are utilizing that as a, what I would consider to be as a loan, as a lack of better words. We, from a staff perspective, anticipate creating some level of repayment through, whether it be development impact fees and/or other park-type revenue streams to reimburse this at some point in time. So, but yes, it's roughly 10% of our general fund holdings.
Or the sale of the other land possible?
We have not finalized the sale of the other land, but when we purchased the land, we call it the lending property, it's actually off of Hopi and at Penale, further north of this site. Obviously, we spent more money for that particular parcel than we did this. And so, there are some potentials, you know, given the real estate market, that we do have some interest. It is, it has some proximity to Penale Avenue, obviously, but does have some restrictions on the lending property because of the drainage issues that we have to deal with at that location. But ultimately, from a staff's perspective, we've at least have some level of dialogue about how we ultimately reimburse the general fund for this, but ultimately for this use this evening.
And then the other thing to piggyback on is, you know, I see this as definitely a regional park area, and that's what people always are wanting, is more amenities, more stuff to do here, and that's a good location to access that. And it's a well-used park already with just what we have there.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can expand, because that is one key component here, is that when we talk about development and the timing of development, this particular site is already close proximity to existing infrastructure. Some of the other larger parcel holdings that we have are not. And the cost to ultimately expand the infrastructure to be able to provide the amenities at this location is going to be much more affordable than some of our other locations, which, in my opinion, only will drive and accelerate the timing of getting these improvements made.
Yeah, obviously, the money is an issue. I mean, that's a lot of money. It's a great opportunity, but Larry, you had mentioned about it not being in the city limits and we would have to work around that. Can you talk about that, just because I'm not familiar with that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman McBride, the parcel is currently in the county, but isn't contiguous, it is contiguous to the city limits. And so, ultimately, there is a process that's defined by the statute that we would have to go through. There may be some configuring that we would have to actually look at because of the, we cannot create a county island and with the development just north of this parcel, it is in the county. And so, there's some, I will use the word maneuvering from a terminology perspective that we, and some configuration that we ultimately may have to utilize as we follow that process. But ultimately, it would be the standard process with the city making the application to bring the parcel into the city limits. We would come to the council, we'd ask your permission to ultimately start that process. There would be a public hearing, there'd be notifications, and the council would ultimately end up with considering this parcel as the only consideration. There would be not any, there would not be other parcel owners or other property owners that would be privy or part of that annexation. So, a typical process, but with us being the applicant and with us being the only property owner at that point.
And you don't see any problem with the county or anything like that?
We've just done a very quick analysis on it, and I believe that there's multiple opportunities for us to bring some, some or all of this parcel in without creating any issues anywhere with the county and/or with the neighboring property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Just one more quickly. I met Eldon in elementary school. And he moved out and went to Tempe, but I think his love of Casa Grande, as you say, on taking less money than he was offered because it was important to him that this be a part of our park service here, so we're indebted to him for that.
Thank you to the Smith family. So, I'll entertain a motion?
So move.
Or ordinance reading. Jump that one. Gloria?
One is number 3, 060. In order to the council, city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing acquisition of Will Frosty, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $1,807,000 plus reasonable and customary closing costs and execution of acquisition documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, it's my privilege to support the ordinance and...
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Corson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Volten Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, move to I two, consideration of ordinance thirty sixty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the execution of a contract with Sunline Contracting LLC to provide pavement striping maintenance to city streets in an amount not to exceed $234,000. Every year, staff budgets an amount for our pavement maintenance program, and it's broken up into three components. The first and largest component is the actual pavement maintenance component, which is chip seals, slurry seals, overlays, those types of things. Then we identify two other processes. One is the crack sealing, which is part of that maintenance program, approximately $100,000, and then we identify approximately $200,000 each year for pavement striping. We're actually, we've identified more needs than that 200,000, but we look at that entire balance and budget our program around that. So we are looking at not to exceed 234,000 for this year's. That does include a 15% owner's contingency, so we've got some flexibility in there not to exceed that amount. We do want to use this contract, piggybacking off of the Goodyear Contract number thirteen, twenty-one ninety-five dash A five with Sunline Contracting. We've used Sunline in the past multiple years and have been very pleased with their performance and look forward to working with them again. We did budget adequate funds in, in this year's fiscal budget, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Am I going to get green striping?
Green striping is not part of this program at this time. That would be a special project.
Okay, so I know, I, I put you on the spot each time on this one, Kevin. So is there at some point in time that we're going to be, the green striping is for bicycle striping, that a lot of people take a look at the white lines, and at every city will tell you that they go, they, they go into those white lines and that they have found that people will not do that near as much if there is green striping. Some that have lots of money, they actually color the entire lane in green. We can't do that, I can understand that. And there's also with some talk about that at our major intersections where we do have a lot of bicycles and that, that there would be, and you had a plan at one time, a configuration of showing so that the bicyclists and the, and the motorists know who's going to be in what lane and how they're going to be turning. And so I would really encourage that we take a look and, and make that a priority.
We have looked at that as an option. Again, one of the biggest challenges the city faces is the funding revenue streams for our pavement maintenance, and of course, with the state sweeps of the HERF funds, that makes it very challenging. As we see the funding horizon change, we'll take a look at those opportunities, but right now, we are still in just a, a maintenance mode. We are not in a expanding what services we provide mode. So at this time, we're not ready to move forward unless we find an adequate funding stream for that.
Kevin, does it include most crosswalks? Is it just some of them, or do we pretty much do the majority of the main crosswalks every year when we do these projects?
So, so our, our program changes every year. We go out and we do an evaluation of each segment of our roadway system, and on average, striping lasts three to five years. Of course, we have different materials that we use for striping, water-based paint and then the thermoplastic. Thermoplastic can last five to seven years in some cases, depending on the amount of traffic on a roadway, whereas the water-based paint is one to three years. So it really depends on where that pavement is and its, its life cycle and what treatments we have planned, whether we're going to use water or plastic. But generally, we look at three to five years, and then in heavier travel, traveled areas, some get it annually. So it really depends on the reflectivity of each of those stripes, and then we redo those when they need it.
So you are pretty much doing, going, not so much just by the year, but you're going out and, and looking at it to see if it, it needs to be done?
That's correct.
More often, okay.
Okay. No other questions? I'll call for an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three, zero, six, one. In order to the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a deal from Sunline Contracting LLC to provide pavement striping to certain city streets, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed 234,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunline Contracting LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move, sorry, passage of ordinance number three, zero, six, one as it's presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Corson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Volten Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item K, ordinances, resolutions, and other matters. Item K one is a variance on a subdivision design standards. Mr. Tice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This agenda item is a variance from our, the requirement within our land development code that new development construct public sidewalks within the street frontage adjacent to their sites. So in this case, the developer is Southwest Gas, who's building a new office building and service yard on Hila Ben Highway, and their site is bounded by three streets. Hila Ben Highway on the south, Adams on the west, and Ninth Street on the north. There's already a sidewalk in Hila Ben Highway, and there is no sidewalk along Adams and Ninth Street. Our standard code requirement would be that they would build a public sidewalk within those street frontages, and they're asking for relief from that requirement. So this shows you their, their site on Hila Ben Highway. A little bit broader perspective, it is in an industrial area. The site is zoned I one. All the surrounding properties are industrially zoned as well. This is their site plan that has been approved by Planning Commission. Their, their site plan actually does show new public sidewalks constructed within the Adams Street and Ninth Street frontages, so they have designed for them and accommodated them in the, into their design, but they do not wish to, to build them. The, there is a sidewalk along Hila Ben Highway throughout that. So those are the sidewalks that are subject to the variance. So our code actually establishes a process by where applicants can ask for a variance from this requirement. And in cases where it can be shown, in the case of a particular development, strict compliance would cause undue hardship. The council may authorize a variance, provided that the general intent of the regulations is preserved, public interest protected, and that variance do not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the, of the general plan or of the code itself. So variance is granted shall constitute the minimum adjustment necessary to alleviate the hardship. And then it has to be considered by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would hear the matter and then forward a recommendation to city council, which has in fact occurred. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and considered this request, and on a five to two vote, recommended that city council deny the variance request. So in terms of, a little bit more detail in terms of the review criteria, the first is essentially that the subdivider is proceeding in good faith. The applicant and their justification make an argument that portions of the surrounding area have not provided connectivity for pedestrian sidewalks, and, you know, we, we, we understand that argument, we believe it's true, we do believe the applicant is, is acting in good faith. What you see on this graphic also is the existing sidewalk system in green down Thornton Road and down Hila Ben Highway. The red are developments that have already developed without providing sidewalks. The yellow are vacant sites that we would expect to provide sidewalks upon their development. So you set up a mixture here, existing, future, and existing developments that did not provide sidewalks. As you can imagine, the constructing of a, of a sidewalk system citywide is an incremental process, property by property under our code. So we build segments that sometimes are not connected to adjacent properties because there's intervening undeveloped properties. You really have two ways of developing a sidewalk system. You can do it in conjunction with new development in an incremental fashion, which our code provides for, or it can be done with, as a city CIP project more globally. And I believe, for example, when ADOT and their approvals in Hila Ben Highway recently did in fact construct sidewalk for some of those businesses on Hila Ben Highway that had not previously constructed sidewalk. So sometimes the, the public agency will take on that responsibility versus private The second criteria is that there actually are some unusual topographic or special circumstances associated with the property that are not the result of the, of the applicant and which prohibit the use of the property in a manner similar to the use of adjacent or nearby properties. Staff did not find that there were any unusual characteristics or features to the site. It's essentially a vacant flat site. The other criteria is that the variance is necessary for reasonable development of the property in question and will alleviate a clearly demonstrated hardship. The site is able to accommodate the five-foot sidewalk. We did cost it out. I'm thinking the cost was in the neighborhood of, of $8,000 for the, for the full sidewalk. Can't hold me to that, but I'm thinking that's about the amount.
But the notes are saying 18 to 24,000.
Oh, eight, in the RCA, it says 18 to 24? Okay, then that would be right. If it's in the RCA, 18 to 24, that would be accurate.
I can't see it costing only $1,000.
Okay. I'm sorry. The, the fourth criteria is the variance will not nullify the intent nor purpose of these regulations, and staff finds that the granting the variance would in fact undermine the intent of the regulations, which is create a citywide interconnected sidewalk system for pedestrian use. And as I mentioned, if the variance is granted, if there is to be a sidewalk provided in the future, it would fall back onto the city as a, as a CIP or Public Works project. I guess one of the things that we looked at in evaluating this is what would the use of the sidewalk be? Is, would it, you know, do we have pedestrians that need to walk somewhere to use the sidewalk to let them walk safely? So we have a lot of employees in these industrial buildings, and if those employees, for example, need to walk for a lunch break to go to the subway that's on the corner of Hila Ben and Thornton, they're, if they're not driving, and they may or may not have cars, they're walking, and they're walking in the road, at least to get to Thornton, Thornton Road. So they would be walking in the street of Ninth or Adams, which could cause safety problems. So one of the reasons that we, staff believes the sidewalk is necessary is to allow employees to actually walk for lunch in the future. If we did actually have transit for folks to, to catch a bus or some other kind of transit facility, the sidewalk would be a good opportunity to implement a walk to where the transit stop may be specifically probably along Hila Ben Highway or Thornton Road. So we do believe that there's the opportunity and need for employees of these businesses to use sidewalks in the future. The fifth is, fifth criteria is that variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and basically that, we find that criteria is not met for the same reason I just spoke about, which is safety of those who would be forced to walk in the street if they, if we do not build a sidewalk. So staff recommended to the Planning Commission that the sidewalk requirement remain to allow the community to build a overall sidewalk system. Planning Commission did, on a five to two vote, recommend council deny the variance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Paul, can we go back this, and you have that site plan, like you've got it highlighted there, the, there was a bigger one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So the, the building is down in the southeast corner, correct?
That's correct.
Of this piece of property?
Yes, sir.
What is all that stuff that's above it and then over towards where the Palm, this all used to be Palm Harbor?
That's retention.
Property. This was, this was their showroom area. So it is all flat, and, and it had no sidewalks then.
Correct.
And there's no sidewalks north on the Budweiser side, because I know, I worked there for many years. And then Price Industry has no sidewalks. Bull Moose has no sidewalks. Cardinal has no sidewalks. The insulation company has no sidewalks, and there's no way to walk on a sidewalk, on a sidewalk, because there's, there's a building over here that's an old Palm Harbor building that's like right to the property line, that's right next to the upper left-hand corner of their property, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry, I didn't let you a chance to answer, but what is all that stuff that's on the north side there?
It's retention basin. The north side of, of this development?
Of the, yeah, of this development, south of Ninth Street there.
That would be a retention basin, down the very north, and then below that, there's a building for, there's outdoor storage and, and like a, I think, a garage, a maintenance building.
Okay, and then where would the employees park?
Interior. I'm not sure if they're in the parking that's sort of to the west of the main building or over on the west edge, but probably both. There's property, you have company vehicles and you have employee vehicles, so those would be either on the west side of the proposed building along Adams. You can see that parking?
Okay, yeah.
Or, pardon? Oh, east side, thank you. East side of, of the building adjacent to Adams, or on the west side, there's also parking.
And is there a public element to this?
Pardon?
Public.
Access?
Yes.
Yes, there would be some public access through the front gate off Hila Ben Highway. That would be the, everything else would be secured entrances, is my understanding, only allowed for employees who have like badge access through the gates.
On Adams and Ninth?
Yes.
So they'd be driving anyway through, out those gates? Yeah. Up on the north side there and then on the east side?
Yes, if they drove to work, that's where they would be driving into, yes.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have some questions?
No, just again, because, you know, it, it's, it's pitting the, you know, you want people to build, you want them to develop, you want, that Palm Harbor thing has been a sad state of affair every time I go by it, and that, I'm glad to see that somebody's doing that. I, I just honestly don't see particularly now that it's been brought out that those two gates going to Ninth and Adams are, are company gates and not for public access. I just don't know if I agree. And so what is the price? So I'm seeing 18 to 24,000.
That, that would just be the range, obviously, depending on how much site grading would have to occur to install it, how many, if you have to relocate any of the utilities.
And so that's quite a bit different than the 8,000 you were saying, right?
Larry, somebody from Southwest here that can answer that?
Yeah.
I, I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Can we ask him to?
Yes.
Sure, come on up.
As an engineer, we, we estimate it to be about 75,000.
Seventy-five thousand? In concrete?
It's literally about 400 to 500 lineal feet of five-foot wide sidewalk. So it would extend from Hila Ben Highway up Adams.
As an engineer, we estimate it to be about 75,000.
Seventy-five thousand? In concrete?
It's literally about 400 to 500 lineal feet of five-foot wide sidewalk. So it would extend from Hila Bend Highway up Adams and along Ninth Street.
It's all this red stuff?
Yes. And to better explain the functionality of the site, so I think you were correct. The access along Adams, access along Ninth Street is employee vehicle access only.
And it's gated?
It's gated. The entire site is surrounded by eight-foot-tall split-faced masonry fence, so it's, the site is intended to be fully secured. Nobody should be accessing or, no, no employee should even be accessing through a gate, and they won't. They need to have a vehicle. But the main employee access as well as visitor access, so anybody who would be accessing the facility as a pedestrian would be accessing through Hila Bend. And we have connectivity with Hila Bend. And we also have ADA parking, ADA ramps, ADA sidewalk, all off of Hila Bend. And that, for the most part, the entire facility internal is all ADA accessible and has connectivity within itself.
Any of sidewalks inside your employee parking area and stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And our argument really was similar to the point that you were making there was there is no connectivity head west. It would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
Right.
And we, we toured the surrounding neighbors and all the development and infrastructure in that area, and none of the existing sites will even support a sidewalk. So that's kind of our argument on that.
So, so is that, is that going to be landscaped then?
Yes.
Instead of sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if this, to you or to Paul, but that last point too, because one of the arguments for this was the connectivity of all the sidewalks, but there's not even able to be connectivity, correct?
Correct. Literally, yeah. It literally would be a sidewalk that would go down Adams, turn along Ninth Street, and connect to nothing.
Dead into a chain link fence of the old Palm Harbor, dead end to their chain link fence. And there's a building that is in the way, so if you ever did want to connect it, you would have a setback issue in buildings that are in the way.
So you're saying that's financially prohibitive to your project?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yeah, and of course, I was torn when I read through the P and Z notes and, you know, listened, you know, paid attention to all the discussion. And I, and I understand, you know, it's in your site plan. I understand we want the sidewalks if we get transit. But then I'm not one to put these unnecessary costs to something that really isn't necessary and, you know, kind of common sense. And so I, you know, I really struggle with that, and especially when there's so many other businesses that don't have the sidewalks. To me, it doesn't seem fair that we have these guys, because now's the time to do it, you know, put a sidewalk, especially for $75,000. I mean, that's a lot of money. And, you know, you guys, I mean, we, you know, we try to encourage our existing, you know, to, our existing businesses to do things, but then when we put these unnecessary costs, I mean, sometimes we have to just use common sense and see what's necessary. But, you know, but then, when I read that, you know, we want to do this in the future, then the city's going to have to take on that. So that concerned me, because then I'm like, okay, I've been on our CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan Committee, and, you know, when I look at the hundreds of projects that we have, and if this, you know, we're going to have to incur this cost in the future. So of course, that, you know, I pay attention to those comments also, but, but I don't, but I just don't see it necessary. And I don't, I, I just, I have a hard time, you know, putting this on the, you know, unnecessary cost, especially for that much money, but.
Mr. Powell?
I, I agree completely with what Lisa's saying. I went out today and drove it. And Adams, it's not a high-traffic area. There's not any traffic going through there. And I live in Evergreen and everybody walks on the street. And all the Evergreen sections, people go out and walk at night on the streets. There's no sidewalks and they're, and they're safe. We haven't had anybody hit by a car. An industrial area, I don't think you want pedestrians particularly. Everybody's got things fenced off. I don't think there's any need for pedestrians to be walking in that area, other than maybe to try to get over the fence or something. But I went around and drove on through, and then I came down through VIP. And there's not one, there's one company that has a sidewalk the length of their, their building only, but it doesn't go anywhere except along their fence line. And, and so as I say, I think it, I think that in industrial, I don't think it's a necessity and, and I'm like Lisa, I don't want to see my gas bill go up at 75,000.
Matt, yeah, I just kind of want to reiterate again, Lisa said it really well. But, you know, putting these undue hardships, especially the point made, because I appreciate all the discussion that was had, but the point made is these sidewalks will never be able to connect anything unless everybody else does major site plan work again, which is the biggest thing. And of course, you guys have been in our community forever, pretty much, as the gas company. So, you know, you guys are making yourselves better and investing in our community, so.
And I, like I said, I worked at this area for 10 years. I worked at the Budweiser plant there for 10 years. And when I went to get a sandwich, I drove my truck over to the gas station. Nobody walked in that area. It's all trucks on the, on the road and you just don't walk. And there's no sidewalks, yeah, and there's no sidewalks anywhere over there. And all the property fence goes right to the, almost to the street and on every one of those buildings that are over there, or, or their parking lot does, one of the two. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the need.
And I know we've talked a lot about putting undue burden on, on businesses, and I think, you know, this one without a justification. Of course, I'm concerned about the president, you know, that we would set, given the concerns by the commission, however, I think, given our discussion today, I think we're pretty safe ground.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you answering some questions. Paul, did you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Glory, can I get a, is this a motion?
Can we just be clear?
Yeah, are we voting to deny or?
Right, let's be clear on the vote on this, please.
If I could, counsel, obviously, we don't get a chance to do these very often, which is probably a good thing. But it is a, a simple action by motion. Which motion you make is entirely up to, to the mover. You can move to approve, you can move to deny. That's, you know, it's just a standard motion, but there is no resolution or ordinance attached to it, so it's by motion only. You can also move to table, although you can't do that under our code more than two times for making a decision.
Mayor McFarlane, I move that we approve the request for variance by Southwest Gas as presented. Is that?
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, I believe, my understanding of that motion is to approve the, the variance as requested by Southwest Gas, which would be for both Ninth Street and Adams sidewalks.
To what?
It would be to approve the variance to, regarding the sidewalks on both Ninth Street and Adams.
To eliminate them, to eliminate the sidewalk?
Right.
Okay.
You want me to state that?
Add that to it.
No, I think, I, I'm just restating the motion so everyone understands. But, but since your, since your motion was to approve the variance as requested by Southwest Gas, that's what it would mean.
Okay.
Okay. Second. Just a roll call, or not even a roll call, do we? Just to approve them? Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approve, anyone disapprove? Okay. It's been approved. All right, move to K2, Consider Resolution Number 5082.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council approve a resolution of support for the Interstate I-11 Tier One Environmental Impact Statement Study Effort, specifically targeting corridor options I-1 and I-2 in the central study area section of the Alternatives Section Report. On November 7th of 2017, voters approved Proposition 416 and 417, that is the Pennell Regional Transportation Plan, as well as the excise tax. And passage of those propositions enables Pennell Regional Transportation Authority to begin administrative actions to coordinate the approved regional transportation plan with Pennell County's two metropolitan planning organizations. Approval of this resolution would demonstrate that the mayor and city council of the city Casa Grande endorses and supports the recommendations and findings of the Pennell County I-11 Coalition and recommends its approval, and that this body will be committed to right-of-way preservation for the West Pennell Freeway Project as it promotes freight movement, links our communities, and enhances job growth within Pennell County. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just, can, just to get a clear, we're talking about segment I-1 and I-2?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Powell?
The, the idea of not going around Hila Bend is very important, as you've got a hypothesis, you've got a triangle there and, and the, it's a lot shorter to go directly up to I-10 and to come around, as it shows, around Casa Grande while they're doing that. And it's not that far out of Maricopa and, and goes on up. The, the real benefit of this, in the long run, is getting truck traffic that goes through Phoenix to take this route around and, and stay out of Phoenix. We don't want them going through Phoenix anymore than they want to. And, and the, by, by having them bypass this way, it's, it's, it's much more direct. And then, as, once you get up to I-10 and go north, that's pretty well set right now on what they're doing, so. I, I, I think it's a very good recommendation.
To that point with the HK and Q1 that he was talking about to Hila Bend, I think that would discourage some of the truckers from going that way because of the time and the fuel usage, you know? And we, I like it there, and this is part of our future. And ancillary benefit would be taking this traffic off of I-10, which probably still won't be wiped out by the time this goes.
Create almost an extra lane through Phoenix once this is completed with the trucks not going through Phoenix.
So, yeah, this is our future of transportation in our area, which is one of our major goals, something like this. I like it.
Okay.
I do too.
Any other comments, questions? All right, then Glory, I'll consider resolution, please.
Resolution Number 5082, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, endorsing and supporting the Interstate I-11 Tier One Environmental Impact Statement Study Effort specifically to corridor options I-1 and I-2 in the central study area section of the Alternative Section Report.
Mayor McFarlane, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5082 as presented. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McRae?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Quetzal?
Yes.
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tenferman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarlane?
Yes. All right, we moved item N to the next item on our agenda, so I'm going to start over here with Lisa.
Um, let's see, last week, we did, the mayor and I participated in the point in time, the homeless count. And, you know, the, the pastor that was here earlier, you know, talked about, you know, listening, you know, to, to the needs of the community and, you know, as we set policy. And I know that's why I, I participated, is to really talk to the people. And I just thought it was fascinating, you know, just to, to see why, you know, people are homeless and, you know, and, and how friendly they are and, you know, don't, you know, you just, you know, you, you just think of, think of the, the issues, you know, different. And, and I, I just found it very interesting. So we, in those three days, counted about 128 homeless in the community and did a whole interview with through Cara. And then the city of Casa Grande Lila did a great job, you know, in our housing department. And, and the need is for, you know, HUD requires cities to do these counts, so when they apply for grant funding, you know, they have this point in time. So it's actually, you know, throughout, I think, isn't it throughout the country? I think they do this, mayor? Yeah. Throughout the country, they actually count the homeless on that day of, you know, where they slept, you know, the, the day before, when we were doing the, the interviews. So, um, so, yeah, so now they have all this data and a map of where we interviewed everyone. And I think that, you know, the homeless coalition and the task force, you know, participated. They had a group of about 30-something volunteers. They were really happy.
About 30 more than we had last year.
Exactly. I think they only had seven last year. And so I think the, the task force, you know, definitely, you know, being that, that in the public eye, we got a lot of volunteers. The Emergency Assistance Ministry, the pastor this, you know, earlier, you know, as part of that, they had a blood drive this weekend and had about 178 people give blood. And yes, the mayor was one of them, he was there, of course. I can't give blood, thank God.
That's why you're so pale.
But, you know, and, and that amazes you, that these people come out on their Saturdays and bring their families, I mean, the mayor had his grandkids with them, and give blood. So, you know, it's definitely, you know, the grandkids did it.
Get the grandkids.
Well, you know, it just, again, it amazes you what, you know, what people do. The transit study, they had their last public meeting last week, all the fact sheets, I'm sure you guys have been getting, and then they're going to meet with the council members, I think, next week, is that right? One-on-one meetings or two-on-one meetings. And then I attended the Leadership Academy opening night orientation, and, and that was just interesting to sit through, you know, just to see, I think there's about 23 participants this, this coming session. And it's just interesting to see why they want to be involved. And, you know, there, it's such a diverse group, you know, you have retired people, you know, young people just, you know, right out of school that want to learn about the city. You know, people have different issues that they want to, you know, ideas that they want, you know, the city to maybe incorporate. And just, it was just amazing, the diverse group that was there, that, that's willing to learn, and they're really excited. And I just thought, yeah, I was just really excited about that and the program. And Kayla did a good job up there, you know, in the, in the, in first meeting, so I think they're going to have a great, great session. So, that's about it.
Great, thanks. Taking half my thunder.
Yeah. I had the pleasure of going to the employee safety luncheon and attended by quite a lot of, of the employees and a great lunch as well. But I think what really struck me was the, the buy-in by the employees for the safety program and the level of participation in, in so many of the departments. And so it was really, it was really good to be a part of that. And then, tie two that I saw in the, the city newsletter that goes out, the, the buy-in into the wellness programs as well. So there's a lot of buying from employees from what is being done for, for the employees by the city. With the youth commission, I just, I was just impressed by, by how confident they are at that age. I couldn't have imagined doing that in front of a city council at age 16, 17, 30, 40, something like that. But just their energy and their ideas, and you can always tell when it's a healthy group because they have energy and ideas and, and they just come together as a group. And then finally, I went to a coin show, not to buy anything, maybe. In all places, and you run into people that are from Casa Grande, like in Mesa or Chandler, and you're, you're just making conversation. And I ran into a couple that's, that's finally bought a house here in Mission Heights, and they just love the city and they talk about it. And so you introduce yourself and, and they just, you know, they're just really like what is being done at the city and the infrastructure and everything. So you just run into across people that really acknowledge the work that everybody's doing here.
All right, thank you, Ralph.
Matthew.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on, as you know, and we can't make it to all of it, but I'm glad we can all go to some of it. But I really appreciate you guys having the youth commission tonight. As you know, I get to work with them more often. And, and also Carl Montoya wasn't here tonight, former councilman, but he does a lot of work with, with the youth commission still.
Does he still?
And so he gets a lot of, a lot of stuff done. It helps because he has his badge and everything, so we get a lot of stuff done. But the neatest thing they had was, you know, and we hit on it tonight, but the Achieve 60 group, Achieve 60 Pennell came, which is Bob Judy Jackson, Evelyn Kasuga, and some other folks on that committee, which is promoting the education. And they're going to partner with the youth commission on this Youth Leadership Day. And it was neat to, that was probably the longest meeting we've had in a long time, but they couldn't believe how much the, the young people were talking to them about the problems. And some of us, you know, they're like, we don't know how to reach these people. And they, you know, the youth commission came up with all these ideas, like, oh, of course, so we can do that. So we're very, very fortunate to have that. And, you know, some of these events coming up, we got Seeds of Hope this weekend, Ninth Museum on the 24th, there's other stuff I'm sure that people will talk about. 24th. There's other stuff I'm sure the people will talk about. So it's going to be, it's a great time to be in Casa Grande, like you said, Ralph, and great time to move here if anyone's looking. Thank you, Matt.
Mike Twister, Paul. That's the one.
I had, I went out to the, to the rabies clinic at, at, out in the, in the, at Hooper Park out there.
Did you get shot?
And, you know what, I-
I was going to say, I was going to be glad, I was glad.
You're going to have to come back for it.
Yeah, okay.
But the, it was amazing how many people were there. And one of the things, it's not a real rabies clinic unless Margaret Pfeifer and, and the mayor, Jackson, are working there. Both of them were. And, but it was amazing, all the people that came in, they had it broken out. People in, out in the county went through one line, and the city, and the city's line was much heavier. But it was, it was really a good program. The, I was amazed at how much, how much my dogs barked at everything else. I have yippie Yorkies, and I, sometimes I hate them. But I, I do love them. But anyway, that, that was neat. The, as Lisa mentioned, I think anytime you have a leadership group that gets together, that, that it's really makes you, makes you, pumps you up to see people that want to volunteer, that want to serve, that want to get involved in the city. And it seemed like a really good group that was there. And, but the, one of the things I wanted to, there's a thing coming up here pretty soon that, that I wanted to remind everybody about. It's Cowboy Days and Odom Tosh. And, and that begins on the, on the 17th of this month. Odom Tosh is on the 17th and 18th, and the parade is on the 17th, the morning. And hopefully, everybody will get in the parade. If you need horses, let me know. And the, they have a softball tournament, the national team roping's on the 19th, which will be probably about a 400-team event. The Mike Serby Jr. Memorial Roping's on the 20th and 21st. And that's like the Phoenix Open that some of the ones have been up to watch. This is the best of the best that you're watching in this. It's, for team ropings, it's a big deal. Then on the 22nd, we have the Maple Leaf Classic, and that's a thank you to the, to the Canadians that come down here and spend the winters. And they, they appreciate, appreciate the city, and we appreciate them. There's a carnival and a women's barrel race on the 24th, and also a ranch rodeo on the 24th and 25th, which Larry and I got to be on city scene. And the, he got to talk more than I did. But it, it was a lot of fun. And I really thank you guys for what you do to help, help get the, the city activities and interest out there. But it, I think it turned out really well. And I'm looking forward to good weather. The mayor's responsible for weather in Casa Grande.
That's right. That's right. I'll take full responsibility.
Okay, a few things. First, I want to encourage everybody to attend the many functions that are coming up. They depend on you, and, and they're, they're very enjoyable. I am going to Bunko for Boys and Girls Club. Looking forward to it. It's crazy, but it's fun. And it's going to be even crazier because Regis Summers is going to be the Masters of Ceremony and that. So that said, I also want to say, as is regarding the purchase of the Smith property, I've been concerned over this. This has been something we've been looking at over and over again, and all. And I, what really pushed me towards it was taking a look at what, first, what Gilbert is doing as a regional park. And then I also, the tumbleweed park in Chandler, if anybody has been over to see that, that is an amazing place. And I happened to be over there for a nighttime event, and it was still amazing how many people were coming and going. We have a roadway built there. There's, you know, four lanes already put into the highway. The access to it is, you know, right there. It's also the entrance to our city. So all of those kind of pushed me over to that other part of saying, you know, this is an opportunity we can't miss. And so that's where I put a lot of my reasoning into it. A little tough, but that's where my reasoning comes from. Another thing that I'm going to ask actually council to consider, but want to put it out there to the public, is since I've been on council and that we have our meetings every first and third, Monday of the month, Monday's tough. First of all, it's tough because it will coincide, as it's going to next, our next meeting, with the three-day holiday. But what's really tough about it is for city staff and department heads and that, because they race to get council and the community, now that we're on, to get all of those materials, everything in there by Thursday and that. So now we get them on Friday. We all work pretty much, we have other jobs. The mayor spends more than $40 a week on his. So more often than not, I'm texting Larry and other people on, over the weekend of, what's this? Can you provide me with this? And I hate doing that. And I, I just would like council to start considering, and maybe we could have some sort of a study session on, to move those to Tuesdays, and actually move them to 6:30. I think this would also, again, give us some time. It would also give the community time, maybe, to be able to come in, to participate. I know that we're televised and that. But maybe if we did start at 6:30, we might have people for that call to the public to be able to really express their views and that in front of us. So it's just something, it's sometime I'd like to see happen.
Okay.
Just a couple things. I think everybody mentioned all the things that we've all been to in the last couple weeks, so it's been real busy. I did want to mention the veterans. We had the birthday, their first birthday party down at the center. And it was really touching to see so many people and so many age groups there that were veterans. There were veterans there with their children. And then we had, you know, people all the way up into their 90s. And, you know, the fact that they had mentioned that over 1,500 of our veterans had been served out of that facility this past year and gotten additional services, kind of goes to the blend of who we are as a community. So I think it's important for us to, to mention that. I did want to mention, because Mr. Lavender is in the galley today, that I wanted to mention, we had talked about the Unity March. But Jeff, thank you for all that you have done for that, because we, we got the chance to talk to the youth commission tonight, and you all know what they mean to me. But Matt, I also know how much work it is. And so good leadership, you know, starts from, you know, every angle. So whether it's Mr. Lavender, or whether it's you with the commission, or whatever we do, I think it's important that we understand that we have a role as mentors for our young people. So I just wanted to, to mention that. And along those lines of homelessness, I learned something tonight from the youth commission, because when the mayor inquired to them about the homeless issue, that both schools, both high schools have closets, so to speak, of necessities for homeless students. And I did not know that. And I think that that is amazing, but it's also very sad that we have students that are homeless, that are still trying to go to school and have some normal, normalcy in their life. So I learned something from them tonight. So thank you. That's it.
I'll ditto, ditto Donna's comments on, on the, on the youth commission. They were amazing young people. So I feel, I feel pretty confident it has a good crop of young people coming out this, this next few years. The, and the closets, there's a resource we missed.
That's right.
Our task force was charged with putting together a list of resources, and that's not on the list. So we need to add that one on there, so.
They did it anonymously, too.
Right.
It would really get help, so.
Just, I, I need to give a shout out to my grandson. He turns, turns seven years old today. So happy birthday, Connor.
Do you want us to sing?
No, you don't have to sing. He's already, I think he's been sung to like three times because he's had three days of birthdays. But, but I did, I did want to give him a shout out. I couldn't attend the, the HOHP birthday party because I was at the Neon Park meeting, which was a great meeting. We're going to build, building a Neon Park downtown. Property is being, I'm going to say donated, but loaned to the, to Main Street, who is kind of the, Main Street and the Historical Society, who is redoing all of our Neons from, from the past. And this park will be right in the, in the grass area, right in the center of town. It's, it's fascinating to see it coming together. I think you all were given copies of the map and stuff, so hopefully you looked at it. It's pretty exciting. The initial check was received by Main Street, $72,000. And then they'll get the other 72 after they spend it. So, but they have 18 months, so this thing's going to happen pretty quickly. And again, I want to give a shout out to the Kramer family for, for their participation in this. It's a big, big deal. And this could be at least the start of an impetus for, for a district downtown, you know, that includes the, yeah, well, includes the black box, you know, and includes our historical museum and our art museum. And so like an art district, if you will, art and entertainment district. So it's pretty exciting to see. And hopefully we're going to see even more of this in the next 18 months. The homeless count was great. We, I did also the smoke detectors with the fire department. Thank you, chief, for, for being out there, your crew, and all the volunteers who were part of that. That was, was, we went in all kinds of places, from mobile homes to homes, and, and put up smoke detectors in all kinds of places. So it was, it was eye-opening to get out and see a different part of the community that I normally don't go to. But there, there are some people in need out there, and it just kind of warms your heart and makes you kind of think how lucky you are sometimes. And you need to make sure we reach out and support people who need help. I also had the privilege to present at the, at St. Anthony's on Monday, the Catholic School Week proclamation that the city did for, for St. Anthony's. And the bishop, our bishop from Arizona, was their bishop, Weisenberg, who presided over the, the mass. And so it was, it was actually quite a privilege for me, anyway, to, to present the proclamation to, to the bishop and to the school. So that was, that was fun. I also attended GPEC, which is the Greater Phoenix Economic Council this last week. And their new, their new plans are to kind of push the Phoenix metropolitan area towards a smart region, or what they're going to call a connected, connected place. And the reason is that when you think of Phoenix, the Phoenix metropolitan area, you think of weather, you think of hot, and you think of golf. And that's it. So the, the intent is to try and develop and build a, an image, just like what we talked at our strategic plan, trying to build an image for our community, for our city. And so not unsimilar, not dissimilar, they have, they feel they have some of, some of the same issues that we kind of deal with. So hopefully, as we move forward, we kind of maybe embrace some of that and, and move, move in that same direction. Again, employee safety, thanks to all the employees who showed up for that. And then I also had an opportunity to go to Legacy and talk to after-school kids who were there in, in their program, and talk to them about citizenship. And I never really got, never thought about citizenship. But it's, it's an interesting topic, especially to talk to seven, six and seven-year-olds about. So it was, it was interesting, and I learned a lot. So I really enjoyed that. We also had the second Pinell County Regional Transportation Board meeting this last week. So we're still dealing with the lawsuit with, that's kind of hanging over that. And there's, haven't had any resolution on that yet. But we will continue to move forward. Also, I'm watching the legislature. They are a full-time job right now. And bills that they're looking at range from everything to builders and developers who want to really kind of get rid of their responsibilities on, on land that they are developing. And I really have a problem with that. In other words, they, they only want it to be X number of years, and then they're done with it. But if all of a sudden, you know, something pops up on it, you know, some asbestos or something like that that they actually put there, it's going to fall on the responsibility of the cities to clean it up. And so those are some of the bills that are shuffling around down in the Capitol. So we'll continue to keep everybody in the loop on that and try and make sure we don't get caught with the issue that we're dealing with right now on Wi-Fi or the poles.
Yeah.
$50 versus $500. So.
Seven hundred.
I'd like to add something real quick. I don't know if you realize, but the mayor's been sending letters to the legislature, to the representatives, on the things that we are opposed to or that are not good for Casa Grande. So we appreciate you doing that.
Keep them growing.
That's all I have.
Rec Center.
Oh, Rec Center, yes. It's when the 12th?
12th.
February 12th at 10:00 a.m. I didn't really want to make it public, though, John, but that's okay. No, I'm just kidding.
I already put it on CG chat.
Yeah, it's already out there, so.
I already posted.
So you may want to be ready to have a lot of people there. Not 50.
I believe we have more than 100 at this point out of RSCP.
There you go. Perfect. So if you'd like to come out, please come. It, it's, it's been a long time coming, so, since like 2006. So I'm, I'm for one, happy to see it here. All right, that's it. We're going to take, or I'll accept a motion to move into executive.
So move?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, we'll take five minutes and then go into executive session. Thank you, thank you, Kayla.